Here.
Ms. Leanna Hardy.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Alejandro Cortez.
Here.
And that president, Mr. David Montemayor.
Mr. English is here.
(laughing).
Here.
Mr. David Montemayor.
Okay.
Ooh, shirts.
All right, so we'll move on to item three for the public hearing to discuss the proposed 2015-2016 budget adoption and tax rate.
Good evening, Board, and Dr. Strike. First of all, before we start, I want to introduce you to Beth Euler. I don't know if you know her, but she's our Director of Budget and Accounting, and she's put in tons of hours, as she does every week, especially surrounding the budget. And I appreciated Ms. Myers and Mr. Olson visiting, and we went through the best PowerPoint already once and got some really good feedback in the initial Finance Committee meeting. First of all, I'm going to discuss that this budget, our current tax, is based on our current tax rate. Historically, Little Elm has had a budget hearing and a tax rate hearing on the same day, but because of the TRE, we already had that budget, the tax rate hearing on July 20th. On July 20th, the Board of Trustees adopted an M&amp;O tax rate of $1.17 and a debt service tax rate of 50 cents, which required a tax ratification election. And the Board of Directors, Trustees, I'm sorry, made a motion to decrease the debt service rate from 50 cents to 37 cents, keeping Little Elm's overall tax rate at $1.54 if the TRE passes. The 2015-16 proposed budget is based on Little Elm's current M&amp;O tax rate of $1.4 and debt service tax rate of 50 cents. If the TRE passes, Little Elm will propose an amended budget to the Board reflecting an M&amp;O tax rate of $1.17 and a debt service tax rate of 37 cents, and again, keeping the overall rate, tax rate at $1.54. And the tax rate will be finalized, won't be finalized until the TRE election. Some budget facts. The 2015-16 M&amp;O budget is a balanced budget, which reflects a 9% increase from 2014-15's initial Board-approved budget. Ninety-three percent of Little Elm's M&amp;O revenue is generated from property tax collections and state funding formula revenue. The main revenue drivers is the property values, and the major factor there is tax rate and collections, enrollment, and the major factor there is their state funding formula. And there's little that any ISD can do to impact their revenue for, to run the school district. On the expenditure side... Oh, I'm sorry, what's going? Eighty-one percent of Little Elm's M&amp;O expenditures are for payroll. Eighty percent of Little Elm's M&amp;O expenditures are budgeted at the school campus level function. And the administration's support service functions were held flat as far as percentage of total budget from the previous year. And this, the Board approves the funds at the function level, the General Operating Fund, Debt Service Fund, Child Nutrition Fund. And we'll have, within each fund, we'll compare it to the prior year's initial budget. And the budget presentation includes estimated revenue and appropriations with percentage of change from prior year, percentage of total budget, and the dollar amount per student for each, at each function level. And the budget is presented in a million. The following funds are required to be approved by the School Board at the function level: The General Fund, keep clicking twice, to account for the general operating proceeds and expenditures; Debt Service Fund, to account for payment of general long-term debt; and then the Child Nutrition Fund, to account for the resources expenditures of Little Elm's federal child nutrition program. And again, these three funds are budgeted at the function level, which classifies and identifies the purpose of the expenditures. An example, you received, I believe, a printout today of the budget that we'll be asking to approve at the Board meeting tonight, and on it you'll see the function level, and that's identified expenditures directly related to the instruction of students. First, on the General Operating Fund. Last year, at the initial, in the initial approved budget, there is a balanced budget, $49.5 million. Our proposed budget for 2015-16 is $4.5 million more than last year's, again, it's the initial approved budget. The major reason for a change from prior year, and revenue was increased $4 million, mainly due to the increase in property tax collections, again, from the original budget. The appropriations increased mainly due to $3.5 million in additional payroll from prior year's initial budget. And this is any additional salaries or payroll-related costs that occurred after the initial budget of 2014-15. And also, we added $500,000 in capital outlay for upkeep of buildings, which, in the 2015-16 budget. Feel free to stop me with questions. This here is, these slides are, is the General Fund by revenue source. Our local revenue increased $5 million from property tax revenue, again, it was 23.4% increase. And on this slide, we also see the dollars per student. And the students and, the student count of 2014-15, 6,899, is the average enrollment during that year, and our proposed student count is from Templeton demographics, which is 7,292, which looks close, or maybe go above that. Our state revenue decreased 3% from prior year's initial budget due to a decrease in estimated revenue from state funding formula. And here, there's a distinction between our state revenue here and the state revenue that we receive from state funding formula. State funding formula is just part of our state revenue.
Ms. Anderson? Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
(laughing) I do have a question. The 23% increase, is that only for the growth that we're experiencing in the Little Elm area, or does that also account the tax rates or the amounts that are increasing? Because I saw a 10% increase in my assessment for next year.
And the local revenue has increased partially based on, but we had a five, again, this is from the initial preliminary budget that was set in 2014-15. And the disadvantage I have is that I'm not sure which summary finance that budget was built on. But I do know that our, when we go down further, that I believe it was $5 million are, from the property tax collection, I'm sorry, from the property tax collections because of the property value increase. I don't know if I answered, can you answer your ask question again?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's about a five, it's over a $550 difference per kid, or per child on the local level. So that's the majority of it. It's the state funding, property, property income tax and taxes, that's the majority of probably the difference of the 23%.
Grant, is it also not, besides the TAVs increasing, which Mr. Flores is referring to, is it not also amounts that were not in the initial 14-15 budget, or underestimated, for example, federal impact aid and the $1.1 million from the tribute?
Yeah, there's additional other local revenue, and I think we're capturing more, more this year. And I know the budget was conservatively set last year at that initial, at the initial budget. I can get you more detail on the, but most of the local revenue was due because of the TAV and the property tax collections. And we'll see that on the next slide.
Thank you.
And the federal revenue in the General Fund increased about $600,000, and that has, in federal funds, that's, that's the revenue we get for the impact aid. Our overall revenue increased $4.5 million, or 9.1% of prior year's initial budget. And this next slate, slide is our, this is our major revenue, as we've been discussing, the state formula, funding formula, it decreased $1 million, and mainly due because of the comptroller values increases. Comptroller value increases less state funds. And that makes up 42% of our 2015-16 budget. Property taxes, this is, again, from the initial approved budget in 2014-15, whatever was estimated at that point in time was $22.8 million. And for 2015-16, we're estimating $27.8 million, which is a $5 million increase. Approximately 93% of Little Elm's general fund revenue is generated, again, from property taxes and state funding formula. And then we have other revenue, about $3 million, which is local revenue and... The General Fund, this is at the function level, and you'll see on the sheet that you got this, I guess this evening, you'll see it broken up into the functions, and this is the function categories. And again, our appropriations are increased 9%, instructional increased 6.7%, $4,485 a student, $4,526 a student. And the first three functions, the 1X, 2X, and 3X are all school, school-related functions where, and if you can see, that's 63%, and 7%, and 11%, and 2014-15 amounted to 81% of our entire appropriations were at the school level, whether it was in the classroom or principals, or training for the principals, or coordinators. And on this year, it's 80%. Administrative services increased 28%. Support services, and again, these increases are mainly due, remember, 80% of our budget is payroll, and any payroll-related costs that occurred after the initial budget in 2014-15, which would have been back last year in July or August. And community service was flat. That's some payroll for childcare. And debt service, and this is debt service in the General Fund, which is our maintenance tax notes. 8% capital outlay. In the 2014-15 initial budget, there was no dollars appropriated for capital outlay this year. We initially appropriated, you know, our buildings are, there's, Rod is very busy, and we initially appropriated 1.5 million, but after the certified values came out, that substantially decreased our revenue. We had to drop this bud, this budget here to $500,000. And then intergovernmental, that's our, our payments for our tax collections to the county. And this slide here is at the object level, and it shows our payroll, 81% of our budget. It increased 8.5%. Contracted, contracted service increased 6.7%. And that's our transportations in this, in this, is a major appropriation in this category. Supplies and materials, flat, at $2 million. Other operating costs, which includes transportation, or travel, stuff like that, and so forth, and debt payments, about flat. And our capital outlay. And our total appropriations, about 9% increase from last year.
Grant, does contracted services, besides transportation, that also includes utilities?
Yes. We'll go on our general, our debt service fund, if you'll move on. Our debt service fund, total revenue, again, this is from our tax collections on our debt service side, which because of the TRE, we learned a lot about. Our total collections in 2014-15 was 11.3, and for 2015-16, we increased about 13.7, which is a 21% increase. Our debt service payments, about 11.3 to 11.4. And we plan on adding $2.3 million to our debt service fund balance in 2015-16 at our current 50 cents tax rate. Child nutrition, oh, and our outstanding debt, $138 million, $18,960 per student. And RBC, they did a, you know, in their last report, they had a comparison of Little Elm's debt to the surrounding school districts, and we're, we're the lowest, I believe, on the chart. But I have, I can provide it to you, if you haven't seen it. Hey, child nutrition. Our local revenue, 1.1 million, 2014-15 increased 9.3%. This is mainly the, the revenue from lunches and any other local revenue, like we see, federal revenues from the free reduced lunch, I believe that were about 48% free and reduced. Our expenditures, balanced. And this is the budget that we're asking you to approve tonight at the Board meeting by function. $53.9 million, general operating, $3 million, student nutrition fund, and debt service fund, 11.4. Have any questions?
Is it possible that we can have this sent over to us? I'm sorry. Is it possible we can have this sent over to us, email this presentation? I'm not that far.
Yeah.
My site's not that great.
Yes. Yes, we can, and it'll be put on the website.
Okay, good, that was my next question, so...
All right, thank you.
It's a good presentation, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so at this time, we move on to citizen input.
Oops, I got it wet from the water, not my spit.
All right, with no citizen input, at this time, I've, I call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay. Motion carries, we will adjourn at 6:05. All right, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees at 6:30. All the items on the agenda have been posted 72 hours prior to the meeting, according to the Texas Open Meetings Act. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move one of the reports to the Superintendent, Dr. Strike.
It's my privilege tonight to introduce Reverend Zeke with the New Life Community Church in Frisco, and he's, serves alongside Pastor James Hutchins, who is a great friend of our district, and served on our Strategic Planning Committee, and so glad that Reverend Zeke, that you're here, and he's going to deliver our invocation tonight. Yes, sir, please.
Please stand.
... Father, God, we come before you first, to be praised and glorified, and how we magnify your name, and how we glorify you. Well, first and foremost, we want to thank you for all that you've already done, and all the things that you're about to do in this family. But we want to thank you for this special board, and what you've already ordained them, to do the things that you thank me and ask that you give the courage and give the strength to make the decisions that glorify you through our youth and through our children. Father, not only that, we ask you to touch the children this year, that you protect them, that you put ahead the protection around each and every one of them, that they may be able to come into an environment and feel safe and secure, that they may be edified by the things that they learn, that they might be able to look towards you, and to give you glory by being mature, you know, adults and children in this, in this environment. But not only that, we want to thank you in advance, and ask that you touch the teachers, those that come alongside them, give them the courage to do what needs to be done, give them the courage, the insight, and the wisdom, Father, not only that. We want to ask that you touch every employee in the school. Touch them, bless them in a special way. Bless them, be blessed every time they come in contact with our children, that they might be able to glorify you also, because at the end of the day, our job is simply to glorify you. It's in the precious name of Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Ms. Badeo, can we have roll call, please? When you're ready.
Dr. Olson?
Here. Sorry.
David Montemayor.
Here.
Ms. Lawrence Meyer.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Alejandro Cortez.
Here.
Mr. Zeke.
Here.
Mr. Alejandro Cortez.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Badeo, do we have any citizen input?
No.
Okay, so we will move on to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for August 4th and the workshop meeting minutes for August 10th.
So moved?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all those, are there any questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. We will move on to further the report to the Superintendent, Dr. Strike.
Well, we're going to start out and call Mr. Reeves to the podium to do a presentation on construction update. On his way up here, just want to say great praise to Rod and his team, Danny, who's here, just both those guys just working their tails off to get our schools ready to go, and they have tremendous support staff, and of course, everybody knows how hard Joel Moses works, and, and the pride that, that he takes in making sure our buildings are ready for our kids, which they were, so, great job, and right down to the last minute. And also a comment, Paul Deal, that works with us on our JLC, he, when you think about customer service, you could put his picture beside him, I just, I'm pretty critical, and I'm so impressed, Paul, with the work that you've done in this district, and your care about kids, and want to make sure things are right for our kids, and just want the Board to know that their approval of you is, is well-placed.
Thank you, Dr. Strike, and President Hardy, members of the board. I'd also like to thank Bill Moses, who's not here tonight, and he's our, our disposal staff, and I can't say, say done, and like Dr. Strike was saying about Danny, and our parts of doing all the things they're supposed to do, to make sure we had our schools ready. Let's give a quick update on the construction happening this summer. We started Hackberry, remember that was one of our bigger jobs that we were working on. This is the way it looks today. It's very similar to the picture they had earlier. Big improvement to the... Also...
(laughing).
This is the science yard, and this is kind of looking toward the library, so if you, if you were out there, and you're in the library, you can kind of look and see through. Also, this is the new playground area, we saw it and everything, we placed irrigation systems in there. I didn't even get some different... Cold space now. So these are different pods of each of them, and they have a different color, and they have some graphics as well, with... Take a look at the high school, remember, we took the administrative building there, turned it back into some classrooms, and there'd be old children's area there, and this is just like the classrooms where we're getting painting. Out of the nature, like... Here's where you used to walk into the administrative offices, and so, also where nice school relocated, so... Lakeside Elementary School. What we did there was, we took the kitchen area, and we opened up the cafeteria to the serving line. Forefront, this is glass, Eric called, "Help us with this." Did the whole serving line, we provided a new walk-in freezer and cooler, we relocated actually the freezer. Helped us out a lot with this, and we spent a lot of our money on this, too. So here's just some more views of the way it looked, the new tile we had on there, it's a lot brighter in there, it's a lot easier for... Dioxide floors in there, and also provided a new dry storage area. Worked this summer, and Mr. Deal got that done. Take a look at Brenton Elementary School, just some pictures of the plants, where we saw the whole area, we integrated some new air gate. Do you remember? About when we had to rip out some old concrete. Also provided new fenced areas, large fenced areas, and also up that fire length, so we can drive. Interior, we were at the front entry, all by vinyl, wall covering up. I can help us with... Turn on, we placed some places some graphics. Thomas, the front entry, remember, we, we put new sod there, and Mr. Lomond, all day for him, we really appreciate it. But, and so, I'm sure he, he called us about that. Also in the back, we placed some mulch in there, and also some concrete borders. We also have a large concrete pad, where we have asphalt holes out there, adjusting holes, so we play that.
Right.
Just walk two foot by two foot square, the basketball, so we changed that up.
Okay.
Lakeview Elementary School, this one's still working on the playground area, but Lakeview Elementary School, this one's still working on the playground area, but we can place basins back there, new sod, new areas, new sidewalks that connect connectivity from space to space, so we're not walking through mud. Also, if you look at the top picture, we provided access for special needs students to get Look at the childcare, period sellers. Added bicycle paths for the students. Around there, and so they had new sod out there, we also painted some of the Also ADA access from the Ongoing projects, remember we talked about the shade structures, those would be going in all the campuses except for Oak Point, where we are, where I told you, said they look, I want How about her, will be doing that? Have some native landscape. So, other things we did aside from this, was we did HVAC repair, remember HVAC Always, it's always there. Also, school maintenance, you know, we have our painting, we have to do different types of things, classrooms. Moses painting the facilities. And that for next month, getting that going, and also our operational services. So, I finally want to say thank you to the board of trustees, we really appreciate you putting money towards these projects, I know it's a I went through it pretty quick.
I just have a comment. I also want to thank Mr. Reeves, Mr. Cogdell, and I'm sorry, I don't know Chuck's last name is And he also, they also assisted my son with his Eagle Scout project a couple of weeks ago, they painted the lines for the fake
The band?
Band field out at the high school, and without you guys, he couldn't have done it, he would have liked to have been here tonight, but unfortunately, he's at the stadium tonight practicing. But thank you all very much. We do owe you a new pair of shorts, you got a yellow stripe.
I would like to say, I'd appreciate it, thank you very much for getting some of that stuff taken care of, particularly beautifying the schools and taking those things. With that, I also have, always have additional requests. So, would love to have some additional requests, some things that just kind of looked at. Just outside for the high school, we have marks over there for gum and stuff like that. That kind of thing, and also exterior, yeah, and one other thing, I think the HVAC for the outside food court, our food area, where the basketball is, I mean, the baseball's played, that little service area where they serve the food. The concession stand, yeah, do we have an air conditioner in there yet, you know?
At the athletic complex?
Yeah, because I think, I think, yeah, just want to check on that one. Okay. Yes. The baseball? They got to put it in? Okay. Can we check on that one? Let me check on that, I appreciate that, because I know they had, they were looking to get AC in there, because it was kind of hot for those guys due to concession stands. No, 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 I think, I just something I wanted to follow up on, because I think I mentioned to you a while back, and you were looking at to it. Okay, that sounds good, but other than that, I mean, I think it just It looked great. Looking back. You sure? But other than that, I mean, I had a chance to look at some of the schools today, really impressed with the Lakeside Middle School, just running, walking through there, it looks really nice, nice, it looks nice, so thank you very much for taking care of that, really appreciate that.
I only have a couple of things, of course. The middle school, were you able to do anything in the gym hallway area, as far as, okay. Okay. Yes. Part of that.
We've actually got quite an extensive list of items, and it's what we were able to do this summer, and as Mr. Anderson mentioned, the budget presentation, there's $500,000 in there, and that needs to be significantly more so, when the TRE passes, we'll adjust that budget. And then, of course, as we move forward, we have a long list of things that all our campuses have been walked, that Rod's done that with the principal and some other folks, and established the list of items to bring us back to where we need to be, that have kind of been neglected over the years. And so, we'll have all of those things on the list, and anything else you notice, just pop it straight to Rod, he hates the fact I have a camera phone. I'm constantly sending pictures going, what about this, and I get, well do. And so, it's just a matter of us playing catch-up from probably years of just not paying attention to the little things that add up to be big things, and we'll get all that done, because our kids deserve it and our teachers deserve it, and we'll get there.
And to that point, Dr. Strick, I did notice, when we were at the TRE presentation over at Oak Point, that there's some, and you know, I spoke about the uneven surfaces over there.
Yeah, my understanding is that's been there for a while, since almost shortly after construction, the ground shifted, so, and that one is one that we've had conversation about also. Just a safety, safety concern for us, yeah.
The only other item I had was behind Brent, the field that's back there, so the town is putting in, I want to say $35,000 into irrigation and things like that, to help that field, I think they were going to level it out.
Yes, the irrigation leaves up the town.
Okay. Okay, it may be, and you might have already done this, it may be relevant to reach out, back out to Chad, and just discuss kind of how you can partner together, because I think there was some concern with, you know, if we put this money in, what is the district going to do, that kind of thing? I'm wondering. So, I just thought I'd mention it. Perfect. Right, well, and I think on that one too, it's just, you know, we've done it in the past, you put money towards it, and then it just gets ruined, so why waste the money, why not just figure it all out at the beginning and get it fixed, so.
I think a lot of those joint use things, whether it's with the town of Little Elm, I know that Matthew Southwest has talked with Rod about looking at them putting some soccer field, softball, they'll sprinkle it, and then kind of what might be our role in that, in terms of collaborative work, so there, he's working on that too, so. Mr. Gutierrez is going to talk a little bit, kind of a brief update on the extracurricular drug testing for 16, 17 school year, and kind of where we stand with that.
For trustees and Wanted to give you all just a brief update on where we were with extracurricular drug testing. I had the opportunity to work closely with our athletic director, Coach Sandra Howe, and our athletic coordinator, Coach Kendrick Brown, to really look at research behind drug testing. So, a lot of extensive work has been done, and so what I've provided to you was some of that work that has been done with our athletics department in extracurricular drug testing. One of the things that I'd like to propose is adding this to our board retreat, adding this as a discussion item, so that we can have some open dialogue, and talk about the benefits, the pros and cons of drug testing. One of the things that we have gone back and forth on with athletics is drug testing, and trying to determine whether this is something that would be beneficial to our students in trying to prevent the use of drugs, but also looking at the financial implications, because anywhere, what I think is quoted on here is about $10,000 a year, but that could cost you work from $10,000 to $20,000, sometimes more, if you're looking at more frequent drug testing, and also considering the loss of instructional time as well, because when you are conducting drug tests on campus, then you're looking at possibly half a day of instruction. But what I'd like to propose is adding that to a feature item, so that we can have There's a lot of research behind drug testing, and it depends on what research you're looking at, because if you look at research that was done in the early 2000s or before, you're going to find that there are a lot of pros to drug testing, because at that time, there were a lot of grants that were available. So, when money was available by the government, then you saw a lot of research that supported it, because there was money out there for schools to pay for it, where the research after, more recent, after 2010, you're going to see both ways, and so want to be able to really look at and dig into that data, and determine what is best for our district and look So what I've provided to you is just the research, some of the national data, some of the district data from the survey that was conducted back in 2013 by Texas A&amp;M, and it kind of provides you a good overview of where we stand as a district compared to the state, we are in a pretty good, at least we were in 2013. But what I'd also like to come back and look at is, look at some of our discipline data, especially our JJAP, and those referrals that were from on the extracurricular. But I think this is something that we need is rather than me presenting time to really talk about moving dark, certainly ready, it is an extensive process that you have to carry well to your community. If we do that, we are prepared to roll out some very specific guidelines for our students who are involved in extracurricular activities, as well as rolling out policies, we have our neighboring school districts have thought of the work, to be able we just want to make sure that we're confident, making sure we're making the best decisions.
On this one, I definitely, I would like to see it at our board, our board retreat, or is that the one you suggested, board retreat?
Yes.
Okay, that one, I'd also like to get a lot of feedback from the community on this, I know I've heard feedback, you know, pros and cons from everyone, so I would, I don't know if we should do it after the retreat or prior. I was kind of thinking if we did it prior, we would also have the feedback from the community to discuss during the training.
I think that's additional data that or information that we have. Probably in the November timeframe, so that still gives us plenty of time to communicate this semester and prepare for possibly
Thank you.
Mr. Gutierrez, one question. The graphs here that compares state norms with LEISD, over what period of time are we looking at for LEISD? Yeah, those right there.
Yes, this survey was conducted with in our grade through 12th grade in 2013.
2013. So the state numbers are also 2013 numbers?
So, all of those, all of those figures are from 2013, and the black bars represent statewide data, whereas the light gray represents Not specific types of
And it was just a survey? Just a general survey, is that what you're saying?
As you know, this is one of my high topics for the community, to ensure that our kids are safe in any extracurricular activities, the last thing we want to do is, one, have a child have impact by performing any sports or anything like that, and have a negative physical or mental impact. So this one's really high on my list of things to do. Along with their research, if we begin to talk about it in the board retreat, one of the things I would like to know is, what other programs are currently out there available to help us, and how we can work with some of the organizations, as well as with the city. So that'd be important, if we talk about that in the board retreat, just kind of knowing some of that data.
And that's one of the things that I would be able to bring that information, as well as, as we work through this, we think we'll find some technical resources for our students and for our parents, that we'll be able to share and present.
Yeah. Because one of the things that still touches me is, you know, we had a child who lost his life, and we want to ensure that we can do everything we can on our side to prevent that, if we can, or at least help mitigate any of those issues that are raising our concerns in the community. Thank you, and I want to say thank you personally for you guys looking into this and taking the research on this one, because this is, this is really, really important.
You asked me very well thought out, and so I appreciate your patience, and
Okay, started on the back end of it, so any further discussion, I will also then discuss kind of what to do after, any test that does take place, whether we provide any sort of counseling or rehab, or any of those types of situations.
That would have to be the policy that we create.
And those would be brought to the board for your approval, in terms of all of those guidelines, and how we would go about testing, if that's what we end up doing. I think importance between now and when that board retreat is, which is the board, and of course, all the superintendents leadership team, is to think about in this category, because I'm going to Mr. English's comment about the broader piece, other than drug testing, community groups, that type of thing, is to think about what you want for discussions, so that Sonya can get that as part of a broader agenda to keep us tight. Just send those ideas to her, you know. And she'll get information when we have that discussion later.
Mr. Montemayor, just kind of step back a little bit, if we agree to do the drug testing, then they would, I guess the administration would go develop a policy, they would set up guidelines, which then they would bring that back to us, force to go through, so it would be a two-step process. Further questions or All right, so we'll move on.
Yes, that concludes all of our superintendent reports this evening.
Thank you very much. All right, well then, at this time, we will recess and close meeting, as permitted by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Subchapter 551.074, at 7 o'clock.
I don't need anything.
Yeah. Yeah. The white one, yeah.
This is the other, this is the one with the...
There it is. Now we talk.
I think it's one I'm going to be like, because tonight's the budget.
This one is the...
Hey, Aileen?
Yes, ma'am.
That first comment that you had about the high school, what did you want? You said something about gum?
Yeah.
Well, I was just writing it down, so I had it... Oh, yeah. You know, like where they tried to do something, but...
Jason, Jason.Olsen, O-L-S-O-N at ATC.com.
She just needs to know who else.
Nothing, it's David. I think that was Lemon.
Me and David.
No, is this two of you? I said, I was, Lemon is three. There is Lemon before he has to make a move.
Two for this, it's a committee.
What's a loving at? President, I need assistance.
No, I'm sitting here going, wait a minute, we're just getting excluded on everything. Fine. Okay. All right, well, we will reopen the meeting at 7:32. So the first item up is the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be removed at this point? All right, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion on anything? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we'll move on to our first action item. Mr. Gutierrez, we're going to discuss and consider approval of the education services contract between the ATC and LEISD.
Yes, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Strike, asking that you all consider and approve the service agreement between Little Elm ISD and the Autism Treatment Center of Dallas. And this agreement would allow us to provide services to, to a student there at the Autism Treatment Center in Dallas.
This was a grant, right?
This is, this is grant funded, so these are monies that are allocated for us to, to provide these services to, to students. It's very rare that we do have to utilize these funds, and so we are not going to, to be looking at fund balance or, or any other monies besides this, which is money that has rolled forward on an annual basis and is grant funded, so we're not taking monies from fund balance.
And it rolls over year after year?
Correct.
We don't use it, but we have to get it approved every year?
Yes, we do. We have to, according to CH Local, because it is over $50,000.
So this student's transported to Dallas?
And, and this, this agreement does include transportation, that is, to Dallas. So, so the student is transported from our district to Dallas.
How many students do we currently have?
We, it is very, again, like I said, it's very rare that we have to, to utilize these services, but we're in a circumstance in which we have to provide these services to one student in our district.
And it's, I'm sorry, is this, because I remember this conversation I'd brought up earlier a couple of months ago. Is this the same company that we've used in the past, or is this the one that I'd brought to the attention of, I believe, senior leadership?
I cannot recall specifically if it is the, the same that, that you had said. We have not utilized the Autism Treatment Center, at least in the last four, five years since we've, we've had the same administrator in special education.
Okay, I'll go back and look at my notes.
That, or Dr. Mika can check with Ms. Clover and see.
Yeah, I can't remember. I wonder if it's the one I brought to y'all earlier this year. Okay, I'll look at my notes. Thank you.
Well, let's make the motion, then we can discuss more. I need a motion to approve the education service contract between the ATC and LEISD.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
I'll look at my notes.
Okay.
So is this the closest facility that provides this level of service?
Yes, it, it is. These, many, many times, students who are in a facility like this are, in fact, out of state. When we looked at facilities, we, we have one that, that is in Dallas, there is one in East Texas, and, and there are others that are out of state. So it, it is very difficult to find a facility. Fortunately, we're in, in a position to where there is one in close proximity.
And how's that work? Is a student bused to that facility at the beginning and then picked up, or how's that, how's it work?
This is, yes. The student is transported from home to the facility and then back home.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion? All right, so all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to our next item. Mr. Anderson, discuss and consider approval of the final budget amended, amendment?
I'm asking if we can approve the final amendment to our budget. The main reason I brought the 511 debt service 199 general operating fund is to increase our revenue to more natural and actual priorities.
Okay, so...
Function areas to...
So before we move into discussion, let's go ahead and make a motion. I call for a motion to approve the, is that date correct?
We're looking at June 30 or 15.
The 14, 15?
Uh huh.
That is correct, okay. Oh, the amendment, that's correct, sorry. I need a motion to approve the 2014-15 end of year budget amendments as submitted.
The move?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion or questions?
Just an overall question, but, yeah, I did see that the revenue numbers changed some, but then the expenditure, were you overestimated and all adjusted down?
Yeah, that's been, our expenditures, the job fund 199, they're being increased. Some adjustment is due to... Yeah, we're...
So what is it, the total increase is, what is that, 113? Is that right?
For, for the general fund?
Yeah.
That we're increasing the revenue of $4.1 million, and the reason there is that Berkeley in the district was definitely set at the initial budget, probably the additional revenue. Not brought, what we're doing is just increasing. It's adjusting to fund balance, it's going towards budget. Berkeley, what's happened also is that the additional expense...
Are we good? Any more questions? Okay, so all those in favor? Raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to item C, discuss and consider approval of new insurance vendor for digital learning. Mr. Van Hoos?
Good evening. After we consulted with legal counsel regarding the digital learning protection plan, we determined that it was most appropriate course of action for us to use a third-party insurance company, and we did not want to use the current insurance company, and so we're bringing this to you, ask you to approve Safewear as the preferred vendor, and you'll see that the financial implications are over $50,000 that is funded by program fees charged to the end user. At this time, we would recommend, the administration would recommend that Safewear be the preferred vendor.
All right, well, let's get a motion so we can discuss.
I have a motion.
Sorry. Okay, well, let's try the, can y'all still hear me? Okay, so try it one more, hang on one sec. Mr. Olson, I need a motion to approve the Safewear as the preferred insurance vendor for the digital learning device protection plan?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second, so any questions or discussion?
Yeah, what, how is this in regards to the previous program, cost-wise? Is it...
It is, it is less expensive.
It is less expensive?
It is. And they have a vendor, one of their repair depots is, is closer here, and we negotiated all of our devices would go to the repair depot that is the closest to our location.
And are those ones, that's only ones that are broken that we cannot fix in-house for small minor issues, or that's everything is going to go to them?
Everything will go to them so that we can take advantage of this insurance program.
And do we have spares for the ones we have to send off so that the children are not without...
Excellent question, and yes, we have repurposed the Samsungs. We've taken out the, the worst of the, the bunch and kept...
Kept the white ones, right? Or the blue ones?
No, the Samsungs, the, the silver ones from the middle school.
Okay. I see, and they were blue.
Those were the Netflix.
Oh, okay. All right, so we, but we do have spare, we have a nice pool of spares?
We have a nice pool of spares.
Okay, perfect.
We have a nice pool of spares, and we're sending to a ratio of three to one to third grade. So we have spares on top of sending...
Do we have SLAs as far as time's back for them to get the computers back?
It's 10 days.
10 days.
Which is standard, according to my research.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I have a question. So in May, we approved headcount for computer technician to support digital learning and increase repair turnaround.
That's correct. We're, we're still six persons understaffed, and so we will utilize that person halftime capacity in processing this, the information to get these out to the insurance company and then halftime at a campus.
What was the cost of that when we, for that individual to remember? I don't recall what the cost.
And I don't have time to have, but I thought originally we were supposed to use that person also who could do some repairs?
Yeah, we had, we had approved headcount for that specific reason.
I think there's legal reasons for this, the best way to put it.
One of the questions that I had is if parents choose to opt out of the, the, this is the additional insurance, correct? That they can purchase for...
It is a device protection plan that we strongly encourage parents to utilize. We'll check out a device, but we're not prepared to let them take that home unless it is insured.
Okay. And then how much is this for each parent?
$40.
Oh, this, is this the, the fee that they pay for usage of the laptop?
It's not a usage fee, it is an insurance fee.
Well, the insurance fee, so, but that's the fee that they're paying?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking this was the additional...
It's not an addition to anything.
Strongly recommended.
Yeah, well, last year, we offered an additional. You paid your, your, your upfront fee.
Your usage fee.
The usage, or whatever it was, and then you could, you had the option to pay an additional, the protection plan, and so this is, okay, so you might want to explain that to me, just so I can clarify.
It's, it's legal. We're not charging anything for the device, we're charging for the insurance.
It's, it's a restructuring, basically, of, based on legal advice, it's a restructuring of, of how we're able to handle that and still protect the device and the students that use it.
Okay, so I think, I think we'll get a lot more usage out of it if that's, because the cost last year, I believe, was 150 bucks.
It was, yes, ma'am.
Oh, and that's considerable, especially with school supplies and everything else.
Correct.
So is it still covered? If, if they don't pay the fee and they only use it for, in school, and they don't take it home, and it breaks while at school?
Accidental damage would not be covered under those circumstances.
Who monitors whether somebody that's taking a device home has paid the fee?
It's a, it's an issue that we don't want to run into, and so we're strongly encouraging everyone to pay the $40.
Okay.
It's a very, it's a very reasonable fee, we believe, and we've also made it where you can require, or request financial assistance, and we've also offered an opportunity for them to break it down into as many as four payments.
Well, that's good. Thank you for that.
Yeah, a couple weeks.
Guess we have any further questions or discussion? All right, so all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we will move on to the comments of the board president, which is me. Sorry, I, I don't have any particular comments. I do know that we had some board members that wanted to follow up on some things that we had discussed in the past on our, like, parking lot security with some of the cameras.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to, to Dr. Strike and just follow up with them on, you know, we were looking at cameras in the parking lots to ensure that those areas that were kind of in the dead zones would be covered for both, like, side middle school as well as the high school. And I think that was the main thing I was questioning about that.
And then the anonymous tip?
Oh, the anonymous tip software. We had talked about, basically, they had anonymous tip software which was available from the city with the police department for any activities that students may see, they can send a text, and I think it was for us, it was just turning on that system. And I think, like I said, I think we turned it on, or Rod's going to find out for us.
Next two weeks.
Next two weeks. Okay, we'll turn it on next two weeks, okay. Outstanding.
All right. Mr. Flores, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Mr. Olson?
Just a big thanks to Ms. Pentecost and Mr. Lowman, who was at the high school in Chavez this morning for first day. Chavez was a great experience. The kids were ready to go, fired up. I think Mr. Lowman had a 150 child increase from last year. It was something, it was great. But then also, Ms. Pentecost and the team did a good job. First day, high school, it was a little challenging as usual, but overall, very good jobs by both campuses.
Wonderful. Okay. Mr. English, anything further?
No, ma'am, I'm good.
Fires?
Oops. Since Mr. Olson gave a shout-out, I'm going to do the same to Brent. And to Powell. Ms. Miller had things very organized, that was a lot easier to take as a sixth grade, first-time sixth grade mom. So that was a great experience. Brent, obviously, Ms. Peters does a fabulous job over there. I think the only thing I saw her stress about was traffic a little bit this morning, so, and other than that, I mean, that's normal first week jitters. The other thing that I had to just, and I'm not sure if this is probably a future agenda item, and it may be in September, we'd had discussions in the past on Prestwick and what that's going to look like in the future as far as number zoning-wise, and the, the kids that are going there now from other campuses, I wanted to have a better understanding of what, what that impact is going to be one year, two years, three years down the road, and that might be part of the facility planning that you're working on now.
Yeah, that's, that's a fairly big discussion. In fact, Dr. Mika was ready to have a discussion on that for tonight even, and I delayed it because I felt like it was one of those that potentially maybe even our board retreat, where we can sit down and really look at numbers and get all the demographics through Rod, and, because it's going to, it almost needs to be in a workshop-type format because it's going to involve attendance zones and the demographics of growth and all of that outside of the Tribute to HOA.
Right, okay.
So I, I, we had played around with making that as a suggestion for the board at our, our retreat to have that, at least get a good solid conversation going, because it's a fairly big subject.
I think that's a great idea. I think, you know, anytime we can do some of that advanced planning prior to the, obviously prior to the meetings, that, the orientation meetings that happen springtime...
Absolutely.
Would be great. Will be great.
And that was, I think, that's why Dr. Mika was originally thinking about even now, just so that as people start to even buy homes and think about, well, I'm buying a home and that's in this attendance zone, and the answer may be in six months, maybe not, maybe so, but we don't know that, and so we felt like if we could at least discuss it in November at the board retreat, would give us enough time by the, before the first of the year even, to communicate those things.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep, great, great suggestion.
Will you be me to my comment?
I'm sorry?
I was going to discuss that same thing, I would just request, when we do get that information, you alluded to it as well, having it in, I think a lot of people just consider all of Prestwick as all just a tribute, and they think it's just one zone and it's only residents.
Right.
But to really break that down into what, how many it is HOA students versus the zone, and then break that down and see, you know, where, where everything falls out, because it is, you're right, it's more of a zoning issue.
Yep.
Not just a one HOA issue.
Absolutely. And, and that is in the HOA, that is a growing number, we looked at some of the numbers that are coming in, and that, that number is growing as, as Prestwick, or excuse me, as the Tribute grows, so we just need to balance that out, but right now, it's, it's, it's the other way around, it's outside the Tribute that makes up the greatest percent K8.
I'm sorry, I did have one question. Do we, do we know what the, the development plan is for Valencia yet?
Uh, Rod's been in close conversation, Valencia?
I'll add that.
What, is there anything, update on terms of when they're thinking about breaking ground and all that?
Yes, I'm in contact with the developer, Merdod, there, and Secure in America, and so perhaps, and closed, maybe we can bring an update at the next board meeting on where they stand. So there's some different phases that are coming in, so it might be better to close.
And I think some of that deals with land, is why he suggested closed.
Thank you for the next meeting, thank you.
Thanks, Rod.
Okay. Can't spell, sorry. Okay, well, um, I do have one comment, sorry, I wanted to bring this back up. Ms. Vadio, so we agreed on November 7th, was that for the board retreat? Okay, because the 14th is the national holiday? Yes. Well, a board member's birthday, anyway. So November 7th, and then this, this Saturday, we're going to have the new board member training? Okay?
And we have four, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That attend, so Sonia will post that as a board meeting?
Before meeting was happening, I emailed Mr. Ekelbaum, and he said that because it's in Plano, it's considered out-of-town training, so there...
We don't have to post?
We don't need to, okay.
Okay, good.
Okay, so that's the 29th, right?
Yes, the Saturday from 9 to noon.
The Saturday?
Yes, this Saturday. Okay. And then I also wanted to give a big, big thanks to Ms. Vadio, I know you have been extremely busy these last couple of weeks, several requests from the board, myself included, and I just know the first couple of weeks before school starts, you get very overwhelmed. So I just want to make, say a big thank you to you, because you do a lot of work for us as a board and for Dr. Strike, so, thank you.
We appreciate that.
All righty. Okay, Dr. Strike, your turn.
Um, just again, clarifying the, the board retreat for November 7th, that will be at the Tribute, the golf course, Golf Club, 8 to 2, and we have the big room, so we can kind of spread out and put some chart paper up and whatever we need to do there, and meals and everything, we'll, we'll have all that worked out, Sonia's planned all of that, and that's just a nice environment, because it's bright and easy to, to, to move around, so we'll have that all set up, and that will be all of superintendent's leadership team as well as the board. We've got TRE, early voting going on, as you well know, continuing to run through September 1st, with early voting, then September 5th is actual election day. So we've got that set up. We have the community pep rally Wednesday night, August 26th, and several people, including Ms. Howell, been working hard on that to, to meet the Lobos that night, and so that'll be a, a great event, and there's actually early voting at that community pep rally, just to try and make it convenient for folks to be able to, to go to the polls. We've set that up, and, and Sonia's clarified all that, and we're in good shape there. I think the rest of voting is, is going well in terms of early voting, and, and we're looking forward to finishing and wrapping that up on September 5th. Dr. Griggs has September 28th open for our team of eight training, he can do September 28th. I think we're going to get all that clarified, and you'll hear from Sonia, so I'm just kind of throwing that out. It'd be 6 to 9, be, he says he does three-hour block, 6 to 9 on the 28th, and we would have a, a working supper dinner along with that, um, on that date, assuming that all, all works out. He had a couple of dates open, but one of them was during Tascatazbe conference, so it wouldn't work for us, so that's the date we ended up with.
It's 6, 6 to 8.
6 to 9. Yes, sir. We would do that in probably PD 1, right down the hall where we have closed. So Sonia will get a little bit out on that, just to clarify that, so we've got just a little over a month on that. And, um, really, I think, other than the schools just again getting going and everybody works so hard, positive comments on convocation, and how everybody's kind of come to, together as a family and trying to work to do what's right for, for kids, appreciate those folks that were able to make the convocation, that was a, a nice event, we had community folks there that were able to get recognized, and, uh, just, it was, it was a great day, they had an opportunity to get together in the morning at campuses, and then, then come to convocation the afternoon, which worked out really well, and just a lot of, lot of positive energy, and Brent, Ms. Myers, when I pulled in the parking lot today, Ms. Peters was actually out in the parking lot with Danny and a couple of folks, talking about routing traffic and spraying arrows down, so she was on top of it immediately, as, as we know she would be, so, she said, "Yep, we're going to fix that." So I said, "I bet you will," so we're, we're all good, but appreciate all the feedback that the board gives and how active you are in terms of, with our schools and interacting and visiting our schools, and, and just the heart that you have for making sure that, that we're providing the very best for all of our children wherever they're at in the district, so I thank you for having that kind of a heart of, of being servants, that means a lot, as these folks that are over here sitting against the wall, and all the people that work for them, and the folks in the back here, the hard work they do, knowing that they have a board that cares like you do, makes your job a lot easier, and, and we know that you'll hold us accountable, and when things are right, you say thank you and you appreciate it, and that means a lot, so, thank you.
Pep rally is at 6?
7. 7.
It starts at 7.
Starts at 7.
Made the Lobos?
Oh, Ms. Howell?
But we need to be there at 6:30.
The, what are the hours, yeah, the hours for the community pep rally, is there any, starts at, really 5, right?
All the free events, 6 to 5 o'clock. They have some cornholes rolling there, you know, for you guys, the spirit shop will open up right at 5 o'clock.
So what's, what's actually...
Athletes represented from all our groups for photo opportunities, or whatever, too. We'll leave music, so all of that's free, and then drop dead time at 7 o'clock, so I can, you guys, stay on the track about 3:00 and 40:07.
Okay.
That was Duncan, Duncan Booth for Coach Howell's what it was.
Yeah.
We're going to throw corn at her, or is that something different?
I think I stole somebody for that, that ice bucket, bucket challenge last year. I still feel that, I still feel she was from that.
Okay, well, that's everything. I need a motion to adjourn. All right, I have a motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, motion carries, we adjourn at 8:00.
Thank you all.